There she is. Good evening, everyone. We'll get underway with the pre-town meeting at 6:00. Thank you for taking time out of your schedules to come this evening. As many of you know, the evening is geared to the brand-new town. For those who may not be completely familiar with the various steps and processes that lead us to Saturday morning. Good evening. My name is Jim Kane. I have the Good Fortune to Service Town Moderator, and welcome you to the pre-town meeting for 2022. It's offered in advance of our annual town meeting, which will convene in this room on Saturday morning at 8:30. The gathering is geared towards new town meeting members and focused on the opportunity to ask questions regarding the technical and operational basis of the articles. The evening is not intended to be a forum to debate the individual articles, but rather for town meeting members to ask any technical questions that will ensure town meeting members are well-prepared and informed. That particularly speaks to the matter of zoning articles, which are seldom easy, and taking time to understand such matters in advance only benefits each member and the body as a whole. Before we get underway, a sincere thanks to Mark Sarah and the team at SPAC for making this available. Additionally, I'd like to thank our town manager, Kevin Mizikah, who is to my left, far over, and as well as our assistant town manager, Mary Thompson, and assistant town manager for Economic Affairs and a variety of other things, Kristin Lass. Now, with us this evening, we have some department heads to the left. We have the Finance Committee who has a meeting to my right. They'll have a meeting following this gathering. And we have two members of the Board of Selectmen. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and say hello. Great, thank you. For those town meeting members participating, thank you for joining us this evening. As many of you know, our elected town meeting, or any, excuse me. I'm sorry. I gummed up my own intro. As many of you know from either being members or from watching meetings, when you, when we start the town meeting, if you wish to be recognized, simply raise your hand, and the moderator will call on you to speak at a particular time. For this evening, if there are any questions throughout, just raise your hand, and we'll have a nice, easy give-and-take. The goal is to have you all walk out of here this evening prepared and ready for Saturday's conversation. Town meeting members should have received a blue book entitled "The Report of the Recommendation of the Finance Committee." In addition to this formal document, town meeting members should have received additional warrant materials pertaining to the warrant, if it is in your interest to review all of these materials and bring them with you on Saturday. A town meeting warrant is annually set by the Board of Selectmen with input from the town manager and the various boards and commissions in town. For tonight, I will walk through the packet with you and make sure everyone understands exactly the way the meeting will go on Saturday. There's a full explanation provided of each article within the blue book as well. I found each of them to be to the point. This year, when we, when the board moves the article and seconds it, the manager will then offer a succinct, crisp description of the article after the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Please note that the article is more often broadly written, and the particular motion is what you should really focus on. So let's get underway. If you could grab your packet, we'll walk through this quickly. You have your announcement and communication from Sharon Thomas. One of the items is the full memorandum from the town manager, which walks through a variety of the articles and has full, all the attachments. There are 12 of them, as I understand. They walk you through appropriated balances that are still on hand, as well as explanations of the various motions. What I think is really helpful is a change that was made several years ago regarding zoning, which takes the mystery out of it, and there's nothing like pictures when you're a fifth grader like myself. So where's Bernie? I know he's here somewhere tonight. Good evening, Bernie. I think when you read the zoning and then look at the exhibit prepared, I think it will really remove any of the underbrush and clearly explain what the article is seeking to achieve. There's then a series of other exhibits, along with a, two larger town exhibits, that will walk you through several of the articles dealing with property. I would draw your attention to the first item stapled in my sheet, and that is a color-coded bundling explanation. One of the changes that came out of COVID was that allowed moderators with the agreement of town meeting to bundle things so that we weren't at town meeting as long as had been in the past. Last year, town meeting approved a change which allows the moderator to bundle in groups. However, as you will note in your blue book, this is an effort to move along non-controversial items. If any of you have an issue with any of those bundled items, don't let the bundling get in your way. We'll walk through every article regardless of the bundle. If there aren't any real issues, then we'll vote the bundle, but we can always break it up as well. So if you'll look at that color-coded sheet, this was an enhancement recommended from the manager after I got going a little quickly last year and lost some people. So we'll go through a variety of the articles that are not highlighted and take votes on those, and then the plan would be to take the flesh color, the purple, the green, the gray, the red, et cetera. All of the zoning will be taken as individual votes. You'll note that there's a, there's the bundling number, the name, the article that would be bundled, the article subject, a categorization, whether it's financial or what have you, general bylaw, and then the vote that is required. So this year, it's rather simple, majority in two-thirds as normal. Last year, I think we had a four-fifths or something because of a unique fund balance that was created. So if, are there any questions on this sheet? I'm seeing anything, but I don't have my glasses on either. Okay. Are there any questions on any of the fund balances, explanations, or anything that's provided in the sheets that follow that in the communication from the town manager? Okay. I would then ask that you grab your blue book. Prior, especially for brand-new town meeting members. The first page in the report from the Finance Committee, the town meeting procedures. We've sought to take some of the 20 minutes that the moderator would talk and put the aspects right into this page, thereby reducing the amount of bloviation on my part. I think it's a clear explanation of what you're doing and how we do it for new members. When you show up at 8:15 or whenever, there'll be folks from the clerk's office out front. If friends of yours have not been sworn in, they'll be sworn in at that time, Saturday morning, and then they'll get their sticker, then come on in, get comfortable, and we will then start walking through the town meeting warrant. It's really that simple, that straightforward. If at any point one of you is feeling lost, call for a point of order, and we'll get you back on track. If any of you want to debate anything, simply raise your, your hand. I think the clerk is going to make available yellow placards. Where is Sharon Thomas? I thought, I saw her earlier. She's outside. Okay, very good. Swearing at people. So she'll have placards that she's going to give you folks, too, because when you're up there, particularly with glasses, there's a reflection, and sometimes there are, there are spots you simply can't see. So obviously, stand up. We'll, we'll be asking you to come to the microphone as opposed to passing the microphone. Make sense? There's some, there's some veteran town meeting members who are with us this evening. Have I missed anything? Does it, does it roll? Show up, bring a cup of coffee. Don't bring it in this room, though. Right, Kevin?
Nope.
That's right. So, well, we're adults. We're not middle, we're allegedly adults. We're not adolescents, so we won't spill anything. And then, and then we'll just get underway at, at 8:30, right on track, as long as we have a quorum, which I anticipate we will have no problem getting. So comments, questions? Did I miss something? Anybody? Brand-new folks, don't worry about it. We're all friends. Got a basic question? No? All right. Yes? I'm here all day, so this, that's an organic question for the body. If the body, in my humble opinion, if the body's done its homework, comes in with the particular questions, will cause town meeting, a town hall tomorrow? I don't know if we're here past an hour and a half, two hours. It's not like we're rezoning all the town. But again, that's not my decision. It's, it's up to you, folks. When you're satisfied, we'll move, and we'll bundle, and then move on. But if you're not satisfied, we won't be moving. Yes? Yes? And voted on. Each discussed. Yep. They would, they're voted on in the color coding, Deb. That's what we envisioned. Yep, sure. That's fine. Yeah, Chris Mainer first did it at the height of COVID, and then it worked so well, and the state allowed you to do it, that we did it and brought forward the change in Article 2 to allow it. But again, we'll be here all day if people have questions. I think there's a commonality of interest in, in the way that these have been grouped. Obviously, we culled out the operating budget to stand on its own, so I think it makes sense. Anything else? Well, in all honesty, there's food trucks out front, so, yes? Well, yeah, we're not, if you have a technical aspect of it, okay, Mark. So, hold on, Mark. So what's, what are we going to do Saturday? What do you want to do? No, 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 no. That's a separate matter. On Saturday, are we going to have a roaming mic, or are we going to have standing mics?
We'll have the two standing, and we'll have a roaming case on this.
Very good. Thank you. So is it a technical question or a debating matter, do you think? Just ask it, and then we'll all decide. How's that? Sure. Oh, I think the manager will have a full explanation Saturday, so everybody hears the same thing once. That's always the fear. If that's the, if, you know, you try to be helpful at the same point. If there's someone who had a particular interest in that, they didn't come this evening, I wouldn't want to have people thinking that they're hearing two different stories. But Kevin's ready for Saturday morning with a complete outline of what, how it was discovered, et cetera. Right. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Ms. O'Connor?
I would ask for their question about budget.
Yes.
So the last one would be, you look at the town manager, the fact that the town manager doesn't make a lot of difference about the bill.
You would think so, yes. Yes. Well, you know what? You bring a good point, so let's go to that article. The way we will deal with the operating budget article, which is Article Number 5, Bundle 4, it stands on its own. We will, we will do what has been the tradition since I've been involved, and that is, we will start with the article and just say, "Any questions, comments with regard to Article 5, Page 10?" And we'll just walk down, but thank you for clarifying that. You don't have every single salary spelled out in these. They're chunks per department. And then if there aren't questions on Page 10, we'll go to Page 11, and we'll simply stroll through each one, so that if there are questions along that line, or anything else regarding what's a salary one, or salary two, or salary three, or the Conservation Commission equipment, lease funds, what have you, people can ask it. That's probably the one that we take the longest just strolling through. Anything else? For the, I'll be right with you, Jason. For the zoning questions, Bernie will be ready to rock and roll. He's going to give a quick overview of all of them. Any further conversation on any one, obviously, we'll delve into. Yes, Jason? Oh, just one second. Yes, Jason?
Jason Molina, Precinct 1, is getting ready for Saturday. Question about the article, the tree article. The tree article has, on Page 52 of the book, Section 3A, 5, submit an annual report of his activities to the town council. I'm not sure if you have an amendment coming to revise that, because we don't have a town council. I don't know. That's just a find-and-replace error, but certainly not.
Was that town council or legal council, or did we copy it?
Probably wasn't. Select board.
Can you, can you state where it is again, please?
Page 52.
Yep.
Section 3A, duties, number 5, at the end, submit an annual report of his activities to the town council.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, and then just, this is a minor typo, but since we're already editing this one. B, membership, it says, "The committee, period, shall consist..."
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome. And then, different item. Can I ask a technical question about, about the bylaw, I'm sorry, Article 2, to change from Cushing's to?
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I jump on that myself, considering it has to do with town meeting?
Yeah.
We're one of the very few towns that actually has in its bylaws a parliamentary book mentioned specifically, and under our language, the Cushing's is specifically mentioned. We're also one of the very few, it's even a smaller number, that actually uses Cushing. Part of the reason is the, I think we use it simply out of tradition. Many, many other towns, the overwhelming number of towns in our state, use this town meeting times. So after talking to my two predecessors and a few other people, I thought we would at least offer to town meeting a chance to think about whether they're fine with Cushing's or whether they'd like to go to town meeting time. I think it's time to go to town meeting time for a variety of reasons, one of which is the simple fact that it's extremely difficult to get a hold of copies of Cushing's manual. The record-setting seller is Robert Rules when it comes to parliamentary books. That has never caught on with town meetings in Massachusetts for whatever set of reasons. There are nine sets of town meeting times at the library in the reference section. It's something you can easily acquire yourself, and the first or second page has all of the general motions of town meeting listed right out, how you make them, which follows, et cetera. So I think if you're going to have a town meeting, ease of access to the rules, in my opinion, should be one of the objectives, so that it's open to everybody. And clarity is also equally as important in my book. I think town meeting times offers that much more succinctly than the one copy of Cushing's that I have in my briefcase. I sent a letter to all prior town meeting members, and then we've had in the package a letter, that, the same letter, that was sent out to all town meeting members, including new ones. So that's up for debate. It's up to you guys. I'm not a member of town meeting. I offer it for discussion. I think it makes sense to move to something that is much more readily available to members, whether they be new or seasoned members of town meeting. Did I bloviate through you, or do you still have a question? Ah, good, good.
No, thank you for the background on that. I'll be talking about it again on Saturday. But just a technical question. While, while we are swapping out the book, does the bylaw that comes, goes around the saying, "How do we operate at town meeting," is that still stayed in full force? Meaning, for example, the bylaw would say?
It would say?
You cannot, all motions, I'm sorry, all articles need to be taken up. You can't put anything on the table. Is that?
Oh, yes, that would remain, that would, that remains.
Okay.
We're not going to start getting into gamesmanship. We voted up, we voted down.
Okay.
Donna O'Connor?
It procedurally really doesn't change the way we work at town meeting. It's just kind of like a guidebook, a rulebook. It has precedence and more information, so it's helpful. It's kind of like if you picked up Town Meeting for Dummies, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but it gives you a real good synopsis of guidance, but it doesn't really change the procedure.
And it's available, which I do think is of importance to, to new members who, at some point, want to run for a position other than town meeting. Anything else, folks? Yes?
All right. I'm looking at the zoning section. I've picked Article 33 just for its personal curiosity, but the first question is, if we pass a zoning law, what happens to people who are in violation of the new law but have existing structures?
Okay, so what I'm going to do is ask you to write that down and hold that for Saturday, because that way, someone who has the same issue will be ensured to hear the same answer at the same time that you do.
All right.
Okay, but by the way, you should feel free to call Bernie tomorrow at Town Hall and walk through what your concern is, and so that he understands the context of your concern, that the context of where someone comes from on a particular issue is always interesting and important, but it's even more so when it comes to zoning.
Sure. The other question I had, is there a place where I could get definitions to know if the mess of my particular, I guess, roadway, if it is a private drive?
Oh, sure. I refer to all such things to Bernie, and Bernie will help you ferret to get that exact item of information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right, Bernie? Yes?
Who's Bernie?
He's the gentleman right there.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, hi.
Sandra McManus, Precinct 10. I have a question. Are we going to have town meetings on Saturdays thereafter? They're not going to go back to Monday and Wednesday nights?
Well, I don't know. That's up to the five members of the Board of Selectmen who call a town meeting. We have two here who may or may not feel comfortable speaking for the whole board, but I suspect if the board heard from members of town meeting that we prefer a certain set of evenings or a Saturday, the board would take that into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Further comments or questions? Okay, see, oh, I'm sorry. How are you this evening?
Hi, I'm good.
Good. And by the way, the way Ms. McManus did it is the way I should have been requesting all of you to do it. You stand proudly, identify yourself, state your precinct, and then fire away.
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. Someone mentioned clarification of definitions, definitions, and just in Article 9, it repeated, appeared other places, stabilization account and available funds. I just don't know exactly what that means, what that entails, available funds, and what is the stabilization, stabilization account?
We created that fund, I think, through a four-fifths vote at the last town meeting, and I'm going to ask that you remember the balance of that question, just so that everybody has the benefit of the same answer. Anything else? Okay. Thank you all for coming. See you bright and early Saturday morning. If you have any questions in between, as you're reading this this evening, feel free to call Bernie and, or anyone else at Town Hall. Thank you all very much. Okay, Mark, it's all yours.
Finance Committee meeting of, what is today? Is it the 19th?
It is the 19th.
It is the 19th. The Finance Committee meeting of May 19, 2022. I call to order. Good evening. I'm Mark Adler, the Chair of the Finance Committee. We do not have a very busy meeting tonight, but we do have some things we need to get to. Let's see. Call to order, meetings. We have the minutes of April 14 and the minutes of April 28. We'll take them separately, but they shouldn't require too much time. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of April 14?
Minutes of April 14.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 14. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The minutes of the 14th are approved. So everyone had a chance to look at the much more interesting minutes of the 28th.
Move we approve the minutes of April 28?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 28. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Now, as you all recall, we had postponed deliberation of several of the articles. We wanted to get either more minute, more information from, I think it was the Assessor's Office, was it?
Yes.
And the Planning Board. As you will note in the correspondence, we did get letters from the Planning Board regarding their recommendations, and we did get correspondence as well. Although that's not in the correspondence letter, the correspondence section, but we did get correspondence regarding additional articles, Articles 37 through 40, including 39 and 40 that are, that were, we left hanging. So why don't we just go through them very quickly? I know that Judy Vetter, who had concerns about Article 35, nevertheless, she could not make it tonight. I just see, I got an email from her, so just please take that into account when we're going through them. That's all. So let's go straight to Article, consideration of Article 30, which is the continuance of existing uses. Is there any, is there a motion relative there, too, Donna?
Will we approve Article 30?
Second. There's a motion and a second.
To recommend.
That's what I heard, to recommend approval of Article 30. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to recommend, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and the article is recommended. Is there any discussion on Article 31 regarding the action and definition of slopes?
Move we recommend Article 31?
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article 31. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, and sensing in any other way, none. All in favor of recommending Article 31, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Article 31 is recommended. Is there any action relative to Article 32, Donna?
Move we recommend Article 32?
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article 32. Is there any further discussion? Anyone? Now's the time. Okay. All in favor of recommending passage of Article 32, say aye. All in favor of recommending passage of Article Thirty-Two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and the article's recommended. Go ahead.
Do we want to at least read the description, so those watching on TV?
Yeah, that's fine. Let me pull out what exactly it says in the book, just so that way I have it. You know what, Dennis, I have a great idea. How about if I deputize you to do that?
What's that?
How about I deputize you to do that? Would you like to?
Not really, but I'll do it.
Yeah, not, not really, but I'll do it, is kind of the theme here tonight, so, yeah.
So Article Thirty-Three, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section Seven dot L, common driveways, by modifying the dimensional requirements and use restrictions for common driveways, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Move we approve Article Thirty-Three.
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article Thirty-Three on common driveways. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries unanimously, and the article is recommended. Mr. O'Connell, would you like to tell us briefly what Article Thirty-Four is about?
Article Thirty-Four is to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section Seven dot D dot Three dot D, parking lot landscaping relative to screening requirements for parking lots in the limited industrial zoning district, or taking any of the actions in relation thereto.
Thank you. Is there any action on this article?
Move we recommend Article Thirty-Four.
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article Thirty-Four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, and sensing, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries unanimously, and the article's also recommended unanimously. Mr. O'Connell, would you like to tell us about Thirty-Five?
Yes, Article Thirty-Five, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury, Section Seven, Table Two, and Section Six, Table One, used regulation schedule, footnote twelve, by inserting text to allow a building height greater than fifty feet to seventy-five feet by special permit in the limited industrial zoning district, to allow for loading and unloading at the front of the building by special permit in the limited industrial district, or take any, any other action in relation thereto.
Right, is there, thank you very much, is there any action regarding the article?
Move we recommend Article Thirty-Five, seeing as how the Planning Board has discretion in this article, and it's for limited industrial districts, therefore, I move we recommend.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I do want to represent that Mrs. Vedder was displeased with one portion of this, I don't want to go into her, her details, because they aren't mine, and that wouldn't be fair to her regardless. Nevertheless, let's take that vote. Yeah, go ahead.
Just like to make one other comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason for this increase in height in the limited industrial zoning is to allow us to be able to bring in more favorable warehouse buildings, which would be more of a Class A, which is a much higher tax revenue generating building than what we currently will get. And that's because of the way the buildings have changed over the last ten to twenty years, so this, I recommend this because it will help us with our commercial fight, bringing in more commercial tax revenue in a industrial zone area versus a residential.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Anyone else want to say anything on this article? All right, then we'll take a vote, we have, already have our motion, our second, all in favor of recommending approval of Article Thirty-Five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and the article is recommended for approval. We still have, thank you, we still have Articles Thirty-Nine and Forty, which are not the exciting zoning ones, but rather they are tax exemptions. Mr. O'Connell, you can either tell us about those, or you can take this opportunity to pass the buck.
I'll finish up, I started this.
Fantastic, thank you.
To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-One D of the general laws to increase the amounts of allowable grocery receipts in whole estate, in whole estate, real and personal, as set forth in Clause Forty-One, Forty-One B, and Forty-One C, by an amount equal to the increase in the Consumer Price Index published by the United States Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics for such, to be communicated each year by the Department of Labor, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, we had, we did get correspondence from, I think it was the Assessor's Office that would oversee these exemptions. My Wi-Fi is locked down in this building, so I couldn't pull it up on my gadget here, but could you give us a sense, please, because I assume you either have that with you, or at least can just kind of, oh, is it in the town meeting packet, or was it just correspondence to the Finance Committee? I'm glad nobody's watching this. Yeah, there it is, it's number seven, for those of you at home, it's number seven in your packet. Memorandum dated May sixth from Ruth Anderson, Principal Assessor, relative to Articles Thirty-Seven and Forty. Yep, there it is. It looks like a memorandum. So basically, it's a tax relief fund funded voluntarily by Shrewsbury taxpayers to be distributed under the direction of a tax relief fund committee. I know. Sorry, I'm looking at, that's, sorry, that's Thirty-Seven, Thirty-Nine, 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 next page. Oh, allows the, I'm on, doesn't even have a page number, but.
Page Fifty-Five?
No, in the packet.
Thirty-nine, forty, yep.
Thirty-nine, forty, yeah, in the packet here. This is just allowing the amount to increase, the income and asset limit would increase for applicants. It isn't clear to me, my concern frankly with these articles, hold on, hold on just a sec, my, my concern about these articles, my, my own concern, was that it wasn't clear to me who is, who qualifies for this in the first place, so if you can, Mr. Mizikar, explain.
Sure. So there, there's a series of eligible entities or individuals that can get tax abatements and exemptions, and some of them are income-qualified individuals and asset qualifications. So in those instances where it's a, it's a financial means test, these two articles raise the threshold and increase the eligible, or potentially increase the number of eligible For instance, in Article Thirty-Nine, currently, the income limit for a single individual is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars, so if you make any more than that in a single year, you're not eligible for abatements or exemptions. By the adoption of this article, we'd be increasing that to forty thousand dollars for a single individual. And a married couple would increase from thirty-seven, three sixty-seven, to fifty-five thousand. So that's Article Thirty-Nine, it's adjusting the asset and income limitations for particular clauses within the general laws that are eligible for an exemption. And Article Forty adjusts asset limitations to a particular other set. So in, individuals may have other specific reasons that are eligible for tax exemptions, and those include things like disabled veterans and various other designations that are set forth through the general laws. So basically, all this article is doing is just raising the asset and income limits to particular exemptions, and trying to assist taxpayers and reduce their tax burden.
And what's the difference then between these two articles, between Thirty-Nine and Forty?
Just the general laws that they refer to, so they're.
Some exemptions are Thirty-Nine, the other exemptions are Forty.
Yes, that's correct.
I see, okay. Yeah, Dennis, go ahead.
Point of clarification?
If you could speak into the mic.
Just a point of clarification, this, this, these two articles are going to also allow us to index for inflation going forward, so that we don't have to come back in five years again to raise the rate, it's going to use the CPI every year, which is, that way, people that qualify this year don't fall off just because of inflation.
Another good reason.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's allowing this mechanism, if I understand it right, it's allowing a future mechanism to be employed, so we don't have to go into town meeting if we want to make those changes, unless we want to change what the mechanism's going to be.
That's correct.
For some reason. Okay. Yeah, Rajiv?
So, so just to clarify, right, the Article Thirty-Nine refers to provision of Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-One D.
Correct.
And Article Forty refers to Section Fifty-Nine, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Seventeen E. So that's the distinction of the two, that they refer to different clauses of, of Chapter Fifty-Nine.
And those clauses are different exemptions, that's why they're different.
That's right, yes, doing the same thing, but for different clauses.
Thank you. Any further discussions or debate on technically Article Thirty-Nine, and then we'll do Forty, voting on it separately? We, did we do the, did we get the motion?
We, no, I move that we recommend Article Thirty-Nine.
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article Thirty-Nine. Is there any further discussion? Carol, I'm sorry, I would really love to hear what you have to say, but technically, this is not a public hearing, this is open to the public to watch, but not open to the public to participate. That's just how it is. But you can wave your arms around. Okay. Is there any further discussion on it from the committee? Then all in favor of Article Thirty-Nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and.
I move we recommend Article Forty.
Second. There's a motion and a second to recommend passage of Article Forty, is there any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, and sensing, none, all in favor of recommending passage of Article Forty, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and Article Forty is recommended. That is our business regarding the articles. Thank you very much, let's move on to what remains of our agenda, which is, we will meet again here Saturday morning, although town meeting starts at eight-thirty, we will be gathering in, probably over there on the stage, at eight-fifteen. We have no business, but you never know.
We will have to take a substitute motion for Article Thirty-Six due to those technical errors.
Due to those technical errors.
Mr. Molina pointed out to.
Mr. Molina, okay, that's fine, I see no problem with that. But anyhow, we'll be gathering at eight-fifteen for that, and we will be meeting on the third Thursday of June. Mr. Mizikar has confirmed to me that we can attempt to get a Selco primer in on that day, which would be really nice, but we shouldn't have too much business, although he does say we will have a reserve fund transfer, just a nice way to round out the year.
Mr. Chairman, what time will that meeting be on the sixteenth?
I presume at seven, which is really unusual, considering how we've been meeting so early.
That's why I asked.
But it would be really nice to get back into our seven o'clock routine, unless anyone wants to meet at like three in the afternoon or something.
Sure.
Okay, splendid. Okay. Any other business that I missed? I don't think so. There's correspondence, an email from Sandy Fritz regarding the S E F trivia contest, letters from the Planning Board regarding their recommendations, which they recommended, all of them, I believe unanimously. And that is it, so if there's no other reason to sit around, I'll accept a motion.
Move we adjourn.
To adjourn. Is there a second? A second. There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay.